Madam Mayor and the members of the council, we'd like to thank the council for this special meeting today to allow us to present highlights from the Community Vision Charette 2020 Design Work conducted by AIA SB this last July, August, and September. AIA SB are here during this very difficult and challenging time to embrace the community, to offer solutions and continue education and discussions needed to make decisions moving forward. Santa Barbara is such a beautiful and resilient city. We believe that well-thought urban planning and sensible architectural design institute an important perspective to the future of our city as we continue to refine our development tools and procedures for the greater inclusion of housing in downtown Santa Barbara. Throughout the Charette process, AIA SB's members worked closely with city planning staff to receive guidance and develop the Charette 2020. At the same time, we were overwhelmed by the support from the community, including all these sponsors who make this Charette possible.
Thank you, Ty. I wanted to share with the group the process that we as co-chairs participated in. There was a large group of people from AIA SB who participated. The co-chairs were Dede Pikert, Cass Ensberg, and myself, Ellen Bildston. We began the process by formulating a survey to ask key questions of our members of the community about their thoughts regarding housing, movement downtown along State Street, and related topics of parking and such topics that pertain to the downtown situation. We got resounding results from the public, including almost 5,000 responses and open-ended answers to a lot of the questions that were asked. We invite anyone who's interested to see more about that survey to go to the aiasb.com website to see more in detail about the information that was gathered. On the basis of that survey, we put together the program and focus of the Charette. We also met with many city staff people to find out the priorities that the city has for their upcoming policy decisions that need to be made. On the basis of that, we started formulating the Charette and inviting many, many people to participate, among them architects, landscape designers, engineers, and other members of our community. We came out with a group of about 160 participants, far more than we've ever had participate in any of our previous Charettes. The 160 people were organized into 16 separate teams. Twelve of them focused on two blocks at a time along State Street. So looking at this map, you see there's Team One. We had two teams in Team One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, and they each focused on these two-block areas bridging along State Street. Separately, we had four other teams that focused on the whole State Street corridor, all the way from the beach up to Solo Street. So the breadth and the focus was very, very key to the kinds of results that we now welcome you to take a look at with the rest of the teams who are making this presentation.
Building on the creative momentum of the AIA Charette, we imagine a series of public workshops that will produce a vibrant, timeless, and sustainable master plan for State Street and the Central Business District that addresses the needs of the entire community.
The Charette volunteers developed an incredible array of design ideas for the State Street corridor. What you see here is a small sampling of drawings from the four teams that focused on a vision for State Street itself. Team members put forward ideas such as: Integrating the sidewalks in the street as one continuous promenade; Developing a design language for each district that highlights its unique character; And implementing gateways that celebrate the transition between these spaces. These elements could build on the identity of the downtown core and provide opportunities for public art. We found that pedestrian connectivity could be further enhanced by expanding the existing network of paseos and courtyards, adding to the charm of the pedestrian experience in the El Pueblo Viejo district and beyond. With the selective removal of some existing buildings, the spatial relationship between State Street and its surrounding plazas could be further developed. Lastly, we studied how to approach circulation and developed ideas for shared streets, modified bicycle and parade routes, and other solutions to accommodate a lively business district with ample connectivity to multimodal transportation and services.
Here are some takeaways and next steps. Consider supporting the creation of a permanent park-like promenade for State Street. Consider funding the development of an overall plan for State Street and downtown public open spaces, parks, paseos, plazas, and promenades. Explore the creation of a foundation to fund improvements. And lastly, engage the community through workshops and discussions to establish the vision for the future of State Street.
Greetings, Santa Barbara. My name is Cassandra Ensberg, and I'm here today with Isabel Lariva, Paul Poyet, and Robert Adams to highlight our legacy of visual and performing arts in Santa Barbara and the opportunities for us moving forward. Isabel will start us off.
Thank you, guys. How are you guys? Dios nos dio los campos, y la tu mano, y difícil que es. God gave us the fields. The art of man built the city. Here are some beautiful images of Santa Barbara art that we can find throughout the city. And art transcends language and can communicate to people of all ages, cultures, and also backgrounds. Santa Barbara is a beautiful community of diverse artists, known for its magical creativity, its unique beautiful architecture, and for its stewardship in protecting the natural environment.
Art is a celebration of nature and life and all of its emotions, from the festive parade for summer solstice to a sad mariachi song to the dancing at the Mission on Wednesday night when they opened Fiesta. The spirit and the soul of the community is expressed through the arts. Art can be a healing force in the community. It can bring people together to celebrate and play. It's a long history of art and our community and its activities from iModernRI Fiesta, the mural room at the courthouse, Lotus Land, the pianos on State Street, all incorporating art and community. Art's been woven into the fabric of Santa Barbara, blending art and architecture since its beginning. The redevelopment of downtown, these are some of the designs from the Charette, are incorporating art into the architecture itself. And Santa Barbara's always been a one-of-a-kind stage for world-class performances and local festivals like the Solstice Parade. So when we designed the downtown, we redesigned the downtown. We want to make sure that we have those opportunities to continue to enjoy those activities. Changes to the downtown will put our craftsmanship on display through wrought iron work, tile, mosaics, interactive art projects. And our responsibility is to continue to share and write the story of our beautiful and extraordinary town through the arts to keep our legacy alive. Here we have some ideas for different types of art in the redevelopment of downtown, perhaps a bicycle activity area, interactive art on the lower left, some kiosks for selling art incorporated into the downtown area.
These are the things that we want you to take away. Encourage local visual and performing arts in the public realm. Sustain, strengthen, and grow community art and cultural assets. Embrace freedom of creative artistic expression within architectural styles, forms, and colors. Commission artists to participate in the design of public spaces. Build partnerships with local museums and arts organizations to take advantage of opportunities and to achieve the community's arts goals. Streamline the approval process for art in public places and to create opportunities for local artist markets.
Thank you, Robert, and Paul, and Isa. Let us remember, art is our past, art is our future. Let's continue the rich tradition of art and architecture in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
The most vibrant and successful downtowns around the world include a broad and diverse mix of uses, including housing. While State Street today offers many spaces for commercial retail, restaurant, office, and recreational opportunities, housing, particularly workforce housing, is largely missing. We believe embracing all opportunities to integrate new housing into the existing urban fabric is critical to the long-term economic viability and cultural vibrancy of our downtown. While State Street's history, style, and charm is a large part of what makes Santa Barbara so unique and loved by locals and tourists alike, we believe housing, whether via new construction on underutilized parcels or the adaptive reuse of wholly existing buildings, can and should be designed to give homage to the past while embracing the values and vision of our future. The above image shows how the Fifthian building could be restored to its original four-story design and converted to housing units. And the below images show how new high-density housing can not only be consistent with, but enhance existing historic resources. Sustainability and environmental stewardship have long been tenets of our community. Today, we know one of the largest factors contributing to a building's environmental footprint is the context of where it's located. Putting high-density housing in our urban centers close to jobs, services, cultural, and recreational activities facilitate alternative modes of transportation, reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles and vehicle miles traveled, and reduce our regional greenhouse gas emissions. This type of urban development by its nature is sustainable by design. In addition, we believe it is important for development policies to facilitate and incentivize opportunities for integrated stormwater management, rooftop rain gardens, EV charging stations, and rooftop solar photovoltaic.
Working within the principles of our historic fabric in a sustainable manner to build transit-oriented housing is a fantastic way to enliven downtown and to address the deep need for additional housing in our community. For this to be possible, we need to achieve density where it matters in downtown neighborhoods. There are many ways to achieve this, and we have taken a look at a few strategies. On this slide, you can see a possible redevelopment of the property adjacent to the transit center. And you can see the building would fit well within Santa Barbara's historic fabric. Around downtown, there are many surface parking lots. These are easy to convert into mixed-use housing with an option for commercial spaces or offices at the ground floor along the street. Here is an example of a new downtown housing and multi-use area. Existing parking garages are low-rise and offer opportunities to maintain existing parking while infilling housing above and around the garage, as you can see in this lovely reimagining of the parking lot at Cannon Prudino. One of the many ways to achieve additional housing is to design a wide mix of units, including small units like the ones shown here. Some sites and some existing buildings are particularly well-suited to provide smaller units for working professionals who can use downtown as their garden and their living room.
Since the pandemic, many office buildings have been emptied, and some may never return to full office use. We have identified several office buildings, including the six-story Balboa Building shown at the lower right and upper left, that could fairly easily be converted to apartments. Next slide. We're all aware of the exodus of large retailers from Santa Barbara, and their empty buildings provide a great opportunity for new housing downtown. Our Charette illustrates how both Macy's and Nordstrom's buildings could provide dozens of housing units at a fraction of the cost of new construction. On the paseo nuevo blocks, we've envisioned over 300 new housing units, and the residents of these apartments would provide a market for neighborhood-serving retail at street level. The challenge is that developers and property owners who wish to convert existing commercial buildings into residential or mixed uses often find themselves stymied by an array of zoning regulations and development standards that make it difficult, if not impossible, to comply. For these conversions to take place successfully, we think the city should develop flexible standards to incentivize them and a project facilitator to help coordinate the requirements from various departments.
As we explore housing solutions, there are several approaches that can be taken. Consider designation of all rental housing projects in the CBD as community benefit projects without the need for special consideration or finding. Instead of AUD density approach, provide incentives and flexibility for developers to maximize the creation of livable floor areas with a wide range of unit types to make projects feasible. Continue the work in partnership with AIA SB and others to determine the appropriate development floor area ratios. Through design standards, zoning regulations, sensitivity to historic structures, and building codes all apply and can help to ensure that new buildings fit with our community character. Include best practices for development and address sustainability and create an adaptive reuse ordinance. Develop design standards and ordinance provisions specifically to incentivize adaptive reuse conversions to housing in the CBD.
Making housing feasible. There were many advisors to the teams, including city staff and design board members. Peter Lewis and Craig Minus, apartment developers, and myself, John Campanella, selected illustrations as examples of building forms and floor area supporting feasibility. Building forms illustrated. These are really the same building forms that currently exist in the Central Business District. Building form flexibility is shown based on the site dimensions, which produce rectangles or pairs of rectangles, U-shaped buildings around a courtyard, or large square buildings with a center courtyard. In all of these cases, only the building exterior would be visible from the street. Floor areas that are illustrated. If a floor area is only accessible from a courtyard, this really equals less floor area that's being developed. You really have a single row of residences access from this courtyard. This might be feasible for 1960, 1970 apartments and perhaps for condominiums today. But floor area accessible from an interior hallway, which equals more floor area, is really efficient because you have two rows of residences accessed from the hallway. And this is very feasible for apartments today. Livable floor area efficiency. The more floor area per level you can get really results in more livable floor area, and you want to maximize this livable floor area inside the building. Because the more you get, it produces a variety in size of the residences. You can have micro units, studios, one- and two-bedroom units, have a wider market to serve the public. Also, more livable floor area equals efficiency and sharing cost. The site cost, processing, site preparation, grade-level structure with a parking or commercial really provides a situation where now incrementally this additional square footage is much less expensive to produce. We're going to show seven examples of projects that could be feasible. All of the seven projects have floor area accessible from interior hallways. And you'll also see the efficiency of these floor plans and the variety of residence sizes on each floor. You will also see three or more levels of residence in these buildings. On this first slide, these are projects that are rectangle or pairs of rectangles. They're situated both on corners on State Street and mid-block. You can see the variety of unit sizes, types, all of which are accessed from interior hallways on these buildings. On the next slide, we see the Balboa Building, which is being repurposed for residential. It's actually a U-shaped building around a south-facing courtyard. This courtyard is not obvious when viewed from the street. Next to it is a U-shaped building that's proposed on a parking lot. Down below, you'll see actually the Nordstrom Building, which is shown as repurposed as a mixed-use building. This is facilitated by the more recent construction of this building that can really be used for repurposing the building and keeping the walls in place. To the right of it is a square project with the center courtyard on a larger lot. That's the replacement for Cost Plus World Market Building with a new five-story mixed-use building. So what are the takeaways? Flexibility plus efficiency equals feasibility. Flexible design standard as shown by these illustrations can best respond to site dimensions and constraints. Downtown, as you know, is built out, so the sites that are to be selected really have to respond to the environment, and this flexibility in design is needed. Building forms, however, are classic and typical to those existing in the CBD. Efficiency in designing livable floor area reduces costs, and three to four residential floors over ground floor support feasibility. The reason these three to four residential floors reduce cost is the incremental cost of an extra floor is primarily for the floors and walls. You've already incurred the other costs of the building. So flexibility and efficiency are needed since land and building costs really have doubled over the last 10 years.
Stormwater management is a key issue that needs to be addressed currently and in the context of future development. Creating an assessment district would enable the city to create a public infrastructure project that could manage and harvest stormwater, clean and filter it, recharge groundwater, and minimize the impact of the environment by building it into the future of the State Street corridor improvements. A municipal system can create a simple way for developers to deal with stormwater on downtown sites. The water table in much of the CBD is very high and often results in underground retention tanks to satisfy stormwater goals on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Without public infrastructure to help with a project's stormwater goals, the burden of this system and inherent conflicts with special and technical constraints can often be insurmountable. Community open space, parkways, and promenades, and even existing roads can be used to help accomplish these stormwater goals while allowing the features themselves to work in harmony with each other. The setting they create can become a symbiotic solution, a perfect example of how overall result can be better than the sum of its parts. There are many tested ways to do this. As several cities have implemented these techniques already, this slide illustration shows some of the more successful approaches to this concept. And by allowing the stormwater to discharge into the public right-of-ways where it can be naturally filtered, captured, reused, or released into the ocean, we are combining assets of related elements and creating a result that parallels the future of stormwater in urban design.
A stormwater district along the State Street corridor combines several goals which complement each other and allows for a partnering between development projects and the city. Such a district would require development fees from individual project developers to provide funds to enhance amenities for the public and in return, help individual projects by allowing the stormwater features to be more efficient rather than having them compete with an already overburdened onsite program.
Public-private partnerships. Partnerships and a foundation for capital improvements, events, and programming. Of the many projects that the creative Charette illustrated, the performing arts and opportunities for performance spaces and engagement with existing dance, music, art, cultural institutions in the city are all opportunities, as well as engaging with academic institutions with downtown facilities and engagement. Four of the 16 Charette community teams explored visionary opportunities to redevelop State Street. During the history of our special city between the mountains and the ocean, our community has created a special and vibrant place. And the Charette revealed that as a community, we choose to make opportunity out of challenging times, whether it's an earthquake in the 1920s or a pandemic in 2020. And Santa Barbara is ready for that next vision. A park-like linear promenade is created with extensive programmed activity. The park begins at the waterfront and ends at Mitrofaina Street with seven east-west pedestrian extensions integrating special districts and cultural city jewels. The areas are quarter-mile ride by half-mile divided into three zones. The promenade is supported by a one-way transportation loop of shuttle, transit, and dedicated commuter speed bike lanes. All State Street destinations are within a single block.
I wanted to provide a local government perspective of working with several partners downtown, particularly on the funding side of the equation. To realize a community vision for more housing, amenities, and a steady pulse of activity, creative public-private partnerships are essential. Just looking at the potential benefits of a new foundation, when the city's redevelopment agency was eliminated in 2012, we lost a dedicated funding stream for downtown improvements. Measure C enacted a one-cent sales tax with a focus on street repairs and renovating existing public buildings. But on its own, it's not sufficient to fund what's needed. From that standpoint, I appreciate the idea of a new funding model dedicated to planning and fundraising phased projects in a long-term plan. This type of partnership would replace the role of the former redevelopment agency. A foundation could help support a cohesive vision for the promenade, plazas, parks, and connected open spaces to meet diverse community needs. This could serve as a new funding model to coordinate with the city and supplement existing infrastructure funding. There are a lot of community organizations who are very active in making activities and events happen. The downtown organization, Santa Barbara Beautiful, the Park Foundation, to name just a few. To better meet their needs, this could be a funding model to collaborate with them and support programming, really facilitating an alliance of public-private partnerships to meet our goals. This type of foundation could ensure high standards and design quality that lives up to the Santa Barbara brand.
It's your foundation goals and guiding principles. Create, fund, collaborate, communicate. The city can take advantage of both local, very successful foundation examples such as the Santa Barbara Bowl or Moxie, as well as nationwide great examples of whether it's Santa Barbara Bowl, the downtown Boulder Foundation, Friends of the Waterfront Park in Seattle, High Line Foundation in New York, or the Bryant Park Foundation. And all of these different foundations provide all these benefits to each and every one of their communities listed below. Public-private partnerships and foundation, the takeaways and next steps. A critical part of the public-private partnership opportunities have to do with housing as the city can collaborate and coordinate with developers and other members of the community to get city-owned properties that are dedicated to parking as an opportunity for housing. And we really recommend and suggest in the creative process from the foundation that a potential foundation is a tremendous opportunity to take all of this great vision and give it a means to be achieved in reality. to take all of this great vision and give it a means to be achieved in reality.